Robert Kraus.
Present.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Kathy Griffith.
Here.
Terry Cadner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Hamm.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held October 1st, 2012. Item B is receive and approve the minutes of the special work-study session held September 24th, 2012. Item C is accept the minutes of the parks board meeting held September 10th, 2012. Item D is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2012-2013 in the amount of $2,627,590.51.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on these claims? Everybody get their claims questions answered? Any notes or changes to the minutes? Just so we have a motion this second. Would you call for the vote please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Terry Cadner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Hamm.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number three is receive annual Pioneer Library Report from Ann Masters.
Hello, thank you for this opportunity to come and talk with you tonight. I left some materials at your place and I want to just walk through those in a minute. But before I do that, I want to thank you for the opportunity to work in partnership with you to provide public library services for the Moore community. I had to stop by the library on my way over so that I could take a look at the new workstations that were installed last week. They've done a great job maximizing the space and everything looks wonderful. And I know you'll want to stop by and take a look too sometimes. But we are very proud of the Moore Library and we bring lots of people, lots of visitors, to see the library because you do such a great job of maintaining it and it always looks wonderful. I wanted to just give you some highlights of the booklet that is in front of you. And just inside the front page, on that first page one, I wanted to note that our board chair for this past year was Steve Eadie from the City of Moore. So Steve has been our board chair for two years and this coming year, his last year, we'll be sorry to see him leave the Pioneer Board. On pages two and three, there's information about our goals for this next year. And I wanted to point out a couple of things. In building educational partnerships, at the top of page three, it mentions Big Read: Old School. Our Big Read for 2013 is the book Old School by Tobias Wolf. And the author Tobias Wolf will be here toward the end of April. And one of his speaking, one of his presentations will be at Moore's Old School. We've rented the auditorium there and are inviting the Moore Public Schools to send student representatives from the three high schools to hear him speak. I also wanted to mention that on the second goal, on page three, supporting small business and workforce development, Heather Thompson is here with us tonight. And Heather's working with others in the system on a grant-funded program called Smart Investing at Your Library. And I think the City of Moore staff members have recently had an opportunity to participate in that. And we know that Heather does a great job for us. Which reminds me that the first thing on my list was to introduce two people who are with me tonight that need no introduction. I need more of an introduction than they do. Lisa Wells, who's our Assistant Director for Library Services, and Sheila Crosby, who is your branch manager, both of whom do a great job for Pioneer. And then I wanted to mention the third goal, encouraging the reading of literature and joy of reading, which also speaks to the Big Read. But we just had a call on Friday from the Oklahoma Humanities Council and the Pioneer Library System and its Big Read from this past spring. The Joy Luck Club was chosen to receive Oklahoma Humanities Council's Community Leadership Award for this year. So we're proud that they have recognized the good job we're doing. On pages four and five in your booklet is what we call the systems check. And I wanted to note that most of Pioneer's numbers were up, including an increase of 17% in visits to the library and an 11% increase in the size of the collection and a 7% increase in the number of library cardholders. The number of items checked out dropped 12%, but we really weren't comparing apples to apples because one of our big projects last year was the implementation of a new library automation system. And it resulted in an inaccurate comparison, doesn't really have us counting exactly the same things we were the year before. So next year, we'll be able to see, have something to compare to that will be accurate. And I'm sure you're especially interested in Moore's numbers. And of the total number of checkouts you see on the right-hand side, Moore was responsible for 764,111. And the total number of library visitors, Moore welcomed 426,428 people in the library this last year. Inside the center of your book, we have three pages that are stapled together that are some graphs that we produced for tonight. And one of our staff members at the system office worked with Sheila Crosby to determine what we'd like to share with you. And we were, have been curious about the impact that the new South Oklahoma City Library would have on the use of the Moore Library. So it opened in March and you can see that we're comparing here the figures from March through August 11 to March through August 12. In that first graph, we're looking at program attendance. And the second graph, the door count, the number of people visiting. And the third graph, the circulation. And in all three, you can see that the use of the Moore Library has almost stayed even to that period of time from last year. The increase is really shown by, I think, new library customers, new library users in the area of town that the South Oklahoma City Libraries is serving. And on the second page, we see program attendance. And again, the increase really reflects new customers on the South Oklahoma City, in the South Oklahoma City area. The third graph shows kind of a comparison of the circulation compared to the physical size of the collection, which is shown in red, and the size of the library, the feet of shelf space, which is shown in green. And we're comparing the Moore Library to the Shawnee Library, which is next in size, and then the South Oklahoma City Library, which comes third. And finally, the comparison of those four libraries, again, in library Wi-Fi sessions and library computer sessions. So you can see that the Moore Library is heavily used in regard to both of those. And finally, on the third page, the effects of the most recent millage increase. You can see that at the end of fiscal year seven and eight, and that millage increase was voted in May of '08, how much the collection size has increased. The increase in funding has been used to provide 140% more items in the Moore Library itself and 225% more in the Moore area counting South Oklahoma City. So I know you probably remember because we told you and told you, but how much we appreciate the support of our communities in providing that millage increase. It has enabled us to increase hours, increase staff, increase collection size, upgrade technology, and overall just become a better, a better library. The other thing that's included in loose papers in your packet is information about our Pioneer Library System Foundation. Four years ago, we started a new foundation. And that foundation is growing and helping us expand our system-wide programming, particularly summer reading programs and our Big Read programs. And Jeff Miles is a Moore resident who serves on our foundation board. And then I just wanted to note, wanted you to notice that the remainder of the annual report shows month by month, some of the big events in the library system. In September, the Pioneer Library System Board of Trustees approved the purchase of the Old Waters Bookstore in Norman. And we've been working and continuing to work on plans for that renovation. And by next summer, we'll be centralizing all of our system offices in that space. And also providing, the City of Norman is leasing a smaller amount of the space for their first branch library. October, I wanted to point out that the Moore Public Library hosted the annual culture jam and will again later this month. I think it's, what is the date?
Twenty-seventh.
The 27th of October. Turning on over, in January, we noticed that South Oklahoma City and Moore Libraries began a monthly webcast series called Library Connections that's produced by Moore Monthly. And while Sheila and Aiden Street do the webcast, we put it on our webpage and it's available system-wide and they address a lot of system-wide issues. In February, the Gospel Branch featuring Christopher Jones was held at the Moore Public Library. In March, we opened that Southwest Oklahoma City Library. And then turning over to May, the Southwest Oklahoma City and Moore Libraries earned national attention with their Masterpieces Program. This is a program that was developed in conjunction with the library school, the master's degree program at the University of Oklahoma. And the project brought at-risk students between the ages of 18 into the library for group activities and a time with mentors. And the project, the project was featured in a webinar provided by the American Library Association Cultural Communities Fund. So we're proud of that program and hope to see aspects of it continue in the future. And finally, just to mention that the librarians at Moore and South Oklahoma City also collaborated on the production of a summer reading program promotional video. They visit every elementary school and the Moore Public Schools and do a great job of promoting and implementing that program. So I wanted to just again say thank you. And we're always anxious to provide even better service and look forward to hearing from you if you have any recommendations for us. If you have any questions, I'm sure Lisa and Sheila will be happy to answer them.
Questions? I just wanted to say thank you guys for all the work that you do. And our system is better for the use of the library. What I personally feel is that when the new house, she's making up. I still have my original library.
You do?
But anyway, I just wanted to thank you. I appreciate it. It was a great opportunity for me as a, you know, an officer. I'll have to go back to the next if you have another library checkout.
Great, great. Well, we appreciate the opportunity to work with you. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, Sarah Gunderson with Select Actuarial Services is here to discuss our actuarial report. And you should have a copy in front of you there. And when she gets free, she'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Good evening. Thank you for having me and allowing me to come speak to you tonight. My name is Sarah Gunderson and I'm a partner at Select Actuarial Services. Select is a mid-sized actuarial consulting firm that specializes in property and casualty actuarial consulting. We're in Nashville, Tennessee. We've been providing the city's actuarial report for over 12 years. And I've personally had the privilege of working with Gary and Jim for 10 years now. Thank you for that. And if you refer to the handout that Gary mentioned, we'll walk through that to give you the results of the actuarial analysis that was completed as of June 30th, 2012. The purpose of our report is to provide the city with an evaluation of your fiscal year-end, at fiscal year-end, of the retained liabilities associated with health benefits, workers' compensation, and automobile with general liability exposures in accordance with the GASP-10 requirements for recognizing total liabilities. The objective of our study is to answer two questions. The first question being, if the city were to stop operating as of June 30th, 2012, how much money would it need to have to settle and close all claims that had occurred or been incurred on or before that date, June 30th, 2012? And the answer to that question is the required reserve. The second question will be, how much in cost should the city expect to ultimately incur on claims that occur in the next fiscal year, which would be July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2013? The answer that we give to that is called your forecast loss. On your next slide, you'll see a summary of the required reserves and you'll see the pie chart. Your total reserve for all three lines combined was $2,113,000. For required reserves, workers' compensation is going to make up the bulk of that pie because workers' compensation has the longest lag. Those type injuries and claims take longer to settle. So you can see for workers' compensation, your IBNR is $483,000. Your case is $923,000. In red, you can see the health. That's $517,000 in required reserves. And we've also shown your liability case from $75,000, liability IBNR, which stands for incurred but not reported, to be $70,000. And then the other would be a tort claim that's still open from 1990, set at $45,000. Our next slide shows your required reserves in a comparison to the previous analysis. We've broken it out by line and in total. In the next few slides, we'll talk about each line individually. But as of June 30th, 2011, the total required reserves for all lines was $1,819,000. As of June 30th, 2012, that total was the $2,113,000, so an increase of almost $300,000 in required reserves. Next, we'll talk about, we'll look at our health and the changes in health since the prior report. For health and health exposure, it's important to remember that each doctor's visit counts as a new claim. So claims are reported quickly and usually settled quickly, which is not like workers' compensation. So when we look at health and want to set a reserve, we're really just looking at about the last two accident periods. And in this case, your last two, or most recent two accident periods, both showed improvement. The costs for 11 and 12 were 15% lower than were expected. The reason they were so low, so much better, I should say improved than expected, was there was an adjustment we made in our participant account, count from the prior study. In the prior study, that number was a forecast, so we were making a projection. This year, we have more accurate information. And then in 2010, 2011, we ended that with 4.9% better than expected experience. So improvement in both years for health. For workers' compensation, the experience for all years combined was greater than expected. However, we can narrow that down to the 2012 year. It grew the most from its prior estimate. And that was due to a large claim that occurred during the year. However, other years, other years were lower. It's kind of bounced around for workers' compensation. There were many years with decreases, two years with increases. So as a result of that experience, the ultimate loss has increased by 4%, which is $170,000. For liability, the experience since last year improved. It was better than we expected it would be. Both reported losses and paid losses decreased by 9%. As a result, the ultimate losses were decreased by 9% or $83,000. And there are no large losses to date for liability. Next, we'll move on to talk about your forecast losses for 2012, 2013. In the pie chart here, we're showing your health and work comp and liability budget. Total's $4,696,000. Health is going to be a large portion of that. The forecast for workers' compensation is $556,000. Liability is $83,000 and the health would be the $4,057,000. As we all know, the health costs can be quite expensive. As we all know, the health costs can be quite expensive. Projected costs for health benefits are shown on the next slide, and we've broken that out for the twelve-thirteen forecast period. And then the thirteen, you know, we forecasted two periods. And we also show that compared to the previous forecast. The previous forecast for twelve-thirteen was four million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. The current forecast, we were able to adjust our employee count to make that more accurate. Our loss costs stayed flat. So as a result, the forecast loss decreased and is revised to four million and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Then to get our thirteen-fourteen forecast, we adjusted by a five percent medical inflation, an industry number, and that resulted in forecasts of four million, three hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Is that a reset rate every year?
We, yeah, each year, we look at the historical data and we reevaluate. So every year, we reset that rate.
Is it usually brought around five percent, or?
The five percent? It's been five percent for a few years.
Okay.
Projected costs for fiscal year twelve-thirteen for workers' compensation were five hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. This is increased from our previous forecast. That's mostly due to the loss rate increasing from twenty-seven dollars and eighty cents to thirty dollars and twenty cents per thousand dollars of payroll. As I mentioned before, that's, that's due to the higher costs in two thousand and twelve. We pick at that loss rate after looking at the last few years of historical experience. And then to get our thirteen-fourteen forecast number, we project that using a one point seven percent loss cost trend and then a six percent payroll increase. The payroll increase is just a conservative estimate, and it's likely that that will be adjusted downward as we receive more accurate information. And the last piece for forecast is the automobile with general liability. Last year, we projected that twelve-thirteen would need ninety-three thousand dollars, need to budget ninety-three thousand dollars for the forecast period. Since then, we've updated our estimates, and we have more loss information. So we elected to lower the loss rate from five dollars and one cent per thousand payroll to four dollars and fifty-one cents. As a result, that lowered, that decreased your forecast, ten thousand dollars, down to the eighty-three thousand that you see in the middle column. And then to get our thirteen-fourteen forecast losses, we used a point six percent loss cost trend. Again, that's an industry number, and a six percent payroll increase. As those resulted in eighty-nine thousand dollars for the forecast. Our last slide shows, well, next slide shows the program summary. You can see you've got your lines of business on the left, and then reserves in the second column, forecast for twelve-thirteen in the third, and forecast for thirteen-fourteen in the last column. In summary, I'd like to say that the health and liability have both improved. They're moving in the right direction. Workers' compensation is up. However, we can attribute it to a specific accident year or narrow it down to one event. So we're aware of why, why it's moving in that direction. And the last slide is just some definitions, actuarial terms. Just wanted to thank you for letting me come. Are there any questions?
How do our numbers compare to other cities, do you know?
We don't typically compare to other cities. We do other municipalities in Oklahoma, but every, every municipality is a little different in that their retentions, how they run their program. Some may have loss limits of a hundred thousand dollars. So it's really not an apples-to-apples comparison.
Well, I don't know if you would know this, or how do I know, first city manager, off the top of your head, but what department seems to have the most worker comp claims?
It's probably Police and Fire.
Fire Department probably would be.
Actually, I think it's Garbage.
Number one.
Gary?
I would say probably, given all the numbers, probably Fire Department. But percentage rises in people who lift all the stuff all the time.
Fortunately, we don't have too many of those anymore because we don't have anybody lifting stuff.
It used to be.
We used to have a lot in there before we had the automated trucks.
We'd do a lot better than that, get one with our full automatic truck.
Yes, primarily our public safety units, and I would think that would be too different than any other municipality or government.
Fire Department's just the nature of the job, or the majority of the injuries sustained on the job?
We have a lot of injuries that are involved with our exercise and our PE program, very frankly. There is quite a few injuries on the job as well.
I think you're going to see greater severity in the Police and Fire losses.
Most of the ones that you all see, you'll see them coming through. I think there's one on the agenda later here tonight to approve a workers' comp claim, or settlement of one. And almost always, Police and Fire employees, streets and sanitation occasionally.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second. Do we have a motion in a second? Any comments or questions?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number five is consider approved purchase of four Ford Fusion hybrid sedans from Police Department, off state contract, and uh, twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Originally, in the fiscal year two thousand and twelve-thirteen budget, it was approved to purchase gas-only vehicles. And these were the Fusions also. But in keeping with the commitment made by the City of Moore, we thought we'd bring forth your consideration, the possibility of purchasing hybrids instead. There's a little bit of an increase in cost, so that's why we brought that forward to you. But consideration, the fuel cost would be about half. I get twice as good a gas mileage, and the emissions obviously are going to be lower. So that's why we bring that forth today, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Have you guys or Jim figured out how long it may take to kind of balance out the increase of those and the price of the gas?
Cost-wise, it's going to take a while. It's going to take, I mean, they get about forty-seven miles per gallon, city and highway, as opposed to twenty-two and twenty-seven. So, you know, it's going to take some years, but the good thing is that those cars do last probably, you know, eight, nine, ten years. So eventually, they'll pay for themselves, but they'll also have the low emissions, which is a benefit.
What's, what's the difference in cost per, do you recall?
Uh, it's about seven thousand on the state contract. So.
Would these cars be patrol cars, or?
These are going to be the unmarked vehicles because hybrids wouldn't be, you know, sufficient for patrol, power-wise, things like that, in the way they're built, things like that.
Detective and that sort of thing?
Detective and administrative vehicles.
Do y'all rotate, I guess, the high-mile patrol cars? Rotate them out of patrol over to, you know, detective or something?
No, we usually don't. Don't normally rotate those out. We usually put enough miles on them till they're about done. By the time we get finished with them, and we'll either, we'll usually auction those off or...
What kind of life expectancy do you expect to get out of these cars? I know they're not driven very hard, so do you think they'll last a while?
I think they can last, you know, eight to ten years at least, you know? And they're usually, you know, don't have more than a couple of drivers in their lifetime. So they're, the wear and tear is not, I mean, it's usually just to and from crime scenes and things like that, and training meetings, things like that.
Will these be take-home or just stay at the station?
Yeah, they'll be take-home.
Take-homes, okay. Usually, those usually seem to do a little better in terms of wear and tear on them.
Right, yeah. They last quite a while.
I think it's great. I'm glad to hear it's doing.
Let's see how it goes. Do they use the CNG, I guess, or?
I'm sorry?
The CNG or electric, or?
Uh, they're hybrid. They're electric, half-gas, half-electric. The Ford doesn't currently offer the CNG in a sedan. We checked into that also.
We currently have five of these hybrid sedans, the Fusions. I think they've been very well received and using them several departments run, so.
Are they SUVs or are they gas, or natural gas?
Those are, those are gas, and again, they don't offer a CNG in a police package. So, yeah, we've looked into that also, for the cost effectiveness, but it's just, just not there yet for Ford.
So do we have a great big, long police extension cord that we'll go out and park and have to plug these into, or?
Yeah, they'll recharge themselves, so.
Okay.
They're half, they have a gas motor. If you go pat, go over like forty or forty-five, then the gas motor kicks in and it recharges the battery.
Oh, that's how it works? Okay.
So, yeah, they're not a total electric, so.
All right. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? Can you sketch from another side?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries.
Thank you.
At this time, we recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number six is consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held October first, two thousand and twelve. Item B, ratify action to the city council on acceptance of the annual actuarial report and select actuarial services for this period in June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve. Item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen. The amount of that, eight hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars, twenty-two cents.
Make a motion to approve?
All right.
Second.
Thank you. Everybody get their questions answered and vote for changes to the minutes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you. Did I say yes? Yes. Okay, thanks. Item number seven is consider award, wow, that works now. Awarding bid number one-two-one-three-dash-zero-zero-two, purchase of two cab chassis to accommodate a high-compaction thirty-two cubic yard automated side-loading refuge collection vehicle to Allstate Peterbilt in the amount of one hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars each, for a total of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Mayor and Council, items seven and eight are combined. We recently went out for bid for two trucks that we had budgeted for this fiscal year. We received the bids back, and the staff recommends the purchase of the two Peterbilt trucks from Allstate. And for the next item, the compaction bodies will be from Bridgeport, and we've already purchased the last, the last two we purchased was from Bridgeport. So we have good, good luck with those, and they also were the most best bid. So my recommendation is to purchase trucks from Allstate and the compaction bodies from Bridgeport.
Okay. Are these, they're the same thing, you're just putting two together, right?
Yes, just trucks will come from one company, and they'll send them down to the compaction place, and they'll put the packer body on.
Okay, great.
Are you adding to the fleet or just retiring?
Uh, we retired one truck, but that's the other one we added to.
Nope.
All right, this is for item seven. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the item?
All right, thank you. Second. Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Not, let's call for the vote, please.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number eight is consider awarding bid number one-two-one-three-dash-zero-zero-three, purchase of two CNG high-compression compaction thirty-two cubic yard automated side loader packer bodies to Bridgeport truck sales in the amount of one hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars, for a total of two hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars.
Make a motion to approve?
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? I have a question. Everybody in town asked me this. Do those things work just as good as a diesel power?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, there we have it. We have a motion in a second.
We were just, I'm sorry, Mayor, just a reminder, we are getting some partial grant funds to defray the, some of the cost of the increase in cost for the CNG on these trucks. We're still getting that. Probably, Elizabeth, how much was the grant? Do you recall? Anyway, we are getting some partial grant funds for this, but we looked today, Richard looked today, and the CNG at the seven-eleven here was a dollar sixty-eight. Yeah, sixty-one or sixty-eight, something like that. And our diesel is three forty, three forty-eight or something is what it was today. So it's less than half of ours if it's fuel.
I think that's why everybody, why everybody's asking, they're considering, I think, on their next vehicle, if they drive by seven-eleven, they see that dollar and a quarter sign versus three forty-nine or whatever. It's like, wow, that's a big savings.
Certainly saving a significant amount of money on diesel and sanitation.
And they work just fine?
Just as well.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Thank you.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item nine is consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held October first, two thousand and twelve. Item B is approve payment of a workers' comp settlement in the amount of seventeen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars to Thomas Hayes for claim number WC two-zero-one-two-dash-zero-one-seven-six-six-F and authorize placement on the property tax rolls and supplement the budget accordingly. Item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen in the amount of one hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars, fourteen cents.
Move to approve?
To approve?
All right, thank you.
Second.
On that, workers' comp, I mean, can we, is that all we know? Is all we know about seventeen thousand dollars?
Randy, can we talk about that?
It's a court-ordered.
Yeah, it's all about the record. Okay.
It's a court-ordered settlement. Gary, or Gary?
Which one?
It's a fireman ride.
Fireman.
And it was what sort of an injury?
He was stepping out of his truck and wrecked his back.
Okay.
We, we go through a pretty rigorous process with every one of these before they ever get this far. And what we try to do is settle these for the least amount of money possible. Whenever they, we can, we can confirm it was a legitimate workers' comp injury. We try to settle them without getting attorneys involved and going, having to go to the workers' comp court. The attorney that we use can give us a pretty good idea of what the specific type of injury will likely be in court and how much would be awarded. And so many of those will be settled without court.
Okay. We have a, do we have a motion in a second? We do, okay. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other claims questions you want to answer or ask?
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
And Glenn Lewis?
Yes. At this time, we recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting. Item ten is roll call. Would you call roll, please?
Robert Kraus?
Present.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Kathy Griffith?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, here.
David Roberts?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Terry Cavanagh?
Here. Item eleven is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held September seventeenth, two thousand and twelve. Back your motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Would you call the roll, please?
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Terry Cavan?
Yes. Item passes, at this time, we'll recess the more economic development authority meeting and reconvene the city council meeting.
All right, thank you, let the record reflect all members who are still present. Item twelve is new business citizens forum for items not on the agenda, we have no one signed up, would anyone like to speak? Okay, item B is items from the city council or trustees. I have, I have an item, I'm sorry to say that, to report, the passing of Lynn Stedman was last week. He was the chairman of the planning commission, he passed away, he had a lung bout with cancer and he will be sorely missed here. He was a good man, so, anyway, my condolences to his family. Anybody else?
Well, as we speak, the Moore Lions fast pitch softball team is playing for a state championship against, it's top of the first and getting updates, there's no score. But good luck, Moore Lions.
I was glad to see the email about Bell Street and the trucks is going to be moving to the other side. And I would just be curious on the, how we can maybe prevent that delay? Could we help me understand? But prior to starting any construction, all the utilities are already moved and relocated and that would, we don't have that lag time and, and I haven't gotten a lot of calls, but I've just heard conversation, people wondering what the city's doing. And it looks like nothing, if they don't understand the whole picture, but I can understand their frustration, especially if you live up here.
That, that is the way ODOT does their projects where they will not start construction or issue work orders or anything until every single utility is moved. All the utility companies are aware of that with ODOT. It would be more difficult for us to operate that way just because of some of these utilities not cooperating very well with us, frankly. And we don't think we could, sometimes we might not ever be able to start or, or start really late from what we have indicated that we would to you all and/or to the public. And oftentimes, if we'll go ahead and start, it'll give them impetus to go ahead and get their stuff moved because they know we're, we're, we're there, we're, contractor is there. Again, the one utility company is the one that we have problems over and over and over and over again with every project. And I don't know of a way to, I don't know of a way to deal with that. It's difficult in every municipality with that, they have the same troubles with the same company. The Eastern Avenue project over there that you all have approved, that's been awarded by ODOT, which is the two miles from Twenty-seventh Street up to Eighty-ninth and, or up to Seventy-fourth in Oklahoma City. So I understand is held up for some of those same kinds of reasons. It's very frustrating, Stan deals with it on a day-to-day basis and he has some choice words occasionally for that. And it's frustrating for us and, and we know what's going on, as you said, the residents out there don't see a lot going on at a given time and they do get a little bit frustrated. It's a, it's an inconvenient project, Twelve Street's a busy street, so I can understand that, I don't know what to do though.
I met with a project engineer, we looked at it two weeks ago, with A T and T. And he promised me that he would have, and they contracted all of these utility, he was a little heads up and so down driving. He promised me he'd meet me the following week, with that contract, that didn't happen. It's just one project after another, it's always A, T, and T. We, we started, we had the meeting with utility owners back in May of two thousand and eleven. We, you know, you can build a project most of the time, I don't know any problem, but it's just, it, it continues from one project to the next. And we're, we're still working out there, there on Moore Avenue down closer to the South Center.
Right.
But it has still a project going, there's no doubt. But we figured a way where we can go ahead and continue construction. You know, the integrity of the project is not going to be damaged. As far as cosmetics, it will make a difference, there'll be an additional joint in the project, too, we're going to have to cut the concrete off prematurely to allow A T and T time to get in and reload. I don't know, it's not something they, but it's, it started in May of two thousand and eleven. And to me, it's unexcusable. It's just blatantly ignoring our request.
I wonder if there's any kind of legislation that could be passed to mandate that they have to? You know, I don't know, go through the corporation commission or somebody to?
Stan and I talked about the corporation commission today and perhaps trying to see what we can do there or some. And they're always real nice about it and the, the higher-ups that we talk to all the time and that are involved with the chamber and, you know, they'll, they'll be happy to talk to you about it and all, but it doesn't make it out to the, where the rubber hits the rug, so to speak.
Well, just informing the people what the problem is and who the problem is, maybe we can try to change it.
We'd like to put a great big flashing sign out there to say who's at fault.
We need just a vote on it? We could vote on it.
If you won't take that down, I can make that happen.
Okay, well, thank you.
Go for it.
One of, yeah.
We can do that, no, we'll take it down.
One of the things that I would encourage the citizens to do is please shop with those businesses over there because I know they're hurting, I hear from them quite a bit. And if you get a chance to, you know, to go over there and eat at the restaurants, please do so, because they could use the business right now. With that being said, any more items from the city council? Any items from the city manager, trust manager?
Just mention a couple of things, we got the sales tax report, I believe it was last week, you'll have seen that, but it still is looking very good overall for the year. A little over seven percent, for the month, five percent up, so that's really great news for us. Also, the monthly financial statement for September is on your desk here. You'll notice that our general fund and the N P W A fund are looking a little bit better, they're not quite as anemic as they were. That's not a license, any of you out in the audience to do anything different than what you've been doing, but this group over here in the corner. But, but that is looking better there, so we're, I'm happy to see that. Todd, the public meetings that are coming up for the, can you give them that scheduled, please, real quick?
The public meetings for the parks vote will be next week, October twenty-second will be at Oak Ridge, all meetings start at seven. October twenty-third will be at Kelly, October twenty-fourth will be at Windin Creek and October twenty-fifth will be at Heritage Trail. So we'd like a, a lot of people to be there and get good information about the upcoming vote and parks improvements.
Okay, Oak Ridge is the one on Santa Fe?
Uh, Santa Fe and Thirty-fourth. Thirty-fourth, yeah. Uh-huh.
Thirty-fourth and Santa Fe, at what time?
Seven P M, all meetings are seven.
Seven P M, okay. Thanks, we have about three thousand people who watch, so maybe they'll get the message, that'd be great. Anybody else? Item thirteen is a German.
So moved?
Second, thank you. Call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Terry Cavan?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.